All right, you ready, Marissa? Okay, all right, it's 5:30. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to our policy work session this evening. So I will now turn it over to Dr. Harmon to lead us in this work.
Um, have a wonderful evening. I'm glad to be here. Greetings, President Daniels, Dr. Watts, members of the board, Ms. Zantello. It's a happy Wednesday, well, no, Thursday evening. Sorry about that. And we're doing policy work. I'm going to start, we have a few guests to help us through some of those policies. But before we get started, I'm going to, we're going to talk about one policy piece first and we'll, I'll turn it over to Suzy and Randy to talk about those policy connections. Everything is also on board docs for those paying attention and wanting to follow along with us. So all pieces are there.
And I did share before everyone got here, just I'll do it again since we're live. I've got someone downstairs doing some work, so I'll probably be popping. I'm going to have to go down. I'm here by myself for now, so I'm going to have to possibly go up and down the stairs a couple of times, so.
Sorry, working on sharing the screen right now. And you should see the presenter version of the presentation. Perfect. So as I stated, we are here covering our policy work session. This will likely be our final policy work session of the 2020-2021 school year. But we can talk about that, there's a little bit of time at the end and the possibility of needing to add others as needed. So tonight, we have five policies to review and provide updates. This will be a first reading and discussion of each of these. And then as the board reaches consensus on the action, some will likely move forward to second reading and approval at the subsequent board meeting. So Policy 4311, which is visitors, want to talk about some updates and then possibly some alignment issues with WASDA model. Policy 3207, prohibition of harassment, intimidation and bullying. There have been some legal updates and clarifications per WASDA. And then a policies 4310, relations with law enforcement and 4311, school resource officers. And then Policy 6002, fund balance. And so each of these is going to provide a possible update and also some renumbering and alignment has been our practice as we've worked throughout the year. Because I am in the presenter view, I cannot necessarily see your faces, but in just a minute, I will pop out of the presentation so that I can open up the actual policies and we can talk about them. And feel free to interject and ask questions and provide comment. This, as in typical style, will be an active work session with our board and conversation with our board about this work. So the first on the list is Policy 4311. And it deals with visitors. And it is a policy that Kent School District has had on the books for quite some time. It actually is a very short policy. Our version on board docs is about two sentences. Should be able to see that in just a second. And it speaks to our board's intention, our district's intention to open up school visits to our facilities to the public. Parents, community members, interested educators, and then having subsequent procedures to support that. This policy is making our agenda for two reasons. One, there's a little bit of a numbering issue with some policies later on in the agenda that I want to talk about. And then in looking at that work, it also shows us, and I apologize, I am not probably sharing this. Are you seeing 4200? Please, thank you, okay. The WASDA version is actually numbered 4200. And it provides information about the same general ideas. So visitors being allowed to join and participate in district activities. And then also and then also the protocols for how they should check in and those pieces. So WASDA's model policy is a little more robust than Kent School Districts. So it talks about contact with staff. It does talk about visitors, so it addresses the visitors and welcoming environment piece. And then it talks about the prevention of disruption of school operations. And so while initially this showed up because there'll be a discussion about adding an SRO policy, which is essential, the visitor policy is discretionary. And typically, I would suggest a renumbering of the policy if nothing else to create alignment, which means I would suggest that we move and adopt 4200 to align with WASDA's model policy language, also the numbering, with the exception of one small piece. At just about each of our buildings, there is a reference to Policy 4311 and visitors and the proper protocol. And so while typically renumbering the policy would be appropriate, this would actually require a significant re-signage initiative across each of our buildings. And so in order to prevent that, I'm actually suggesting that we not renumber our 4311 to align with 4200 WASDA right now. It's something that we may want to consider at a later date, but I am recommending that we have a discussion about the language here in 4200 and WASDA's model and whether or not we're interested in updating that language to align, even though the numbering will be slightly different.
Okay, just for clarity, you're suggesting we keep number 4311? And just take the language from this policy and move it over to 4311?
Yes, so I'm suggesting that we update our language, that we are policy language aligned with WASDA model. If the board chooses, I mean, and they're, and they would like to, we can update the numbering. It's just going to take a little bit of signage operation. We literally have to remove signs from buildings and print new signs, put up new signage referring to a new policy number. And so that's why, that's why I'm suggesting we not change the policy number at this time. But we do update our language to make sure that we are kind of legally aligned, philosophically aligned with our WASDA model intentions in the law.
Okay, so I think, I think I'm, I think I'm following you and I'm all for saving money.
Usually, I mean, usually I would say we need to align and renumber, and that's been part of our work and our practice in the past. But this is one of those instances where it would not work. And I have to thank Officer Kovach, well, Director Kovach, for saying, hey, I'm all for and in favor of updating this policy. But if you change and you renumber, we're going to have to change signage across our district. So I thank him for pointing that out as well, because we would have taken an action that would have created substantive work and expenses.
Okay, so, and does, does WASDA have a policy 4311?
They do, that's the SRO policy. And so that's where it creates a little bit of a kind of domino effect in terms of one bumping the other. But when we get there, my suggestion is going to be that we renumber ours, keep it closely aligned. So I have, I have a solution for this for now. So where we are still able, again, to adopt the appropriate WASDA model policy language without having to create this disrupt, right? And it won't be, the numbering isn't far off, but I, in order to do that, I felt like we needed to discuss this first, to talk about why we are not, why we're changing a number on a WASDA model policy. So that's a little bit of a, it's, yeah, it's an odd one to talk about, but. And so when I, I just want to point out that the WASDA model policy here is a little bit longer than ours, but it conveys, what it does is it conveys the same messaging, so it keeps almost the exact same visitor language. But then it talks about disruption of schools and under which circumstances a guest, a visitor, would be asked to leave. So if they're causing a disruption and they are things that would make sense and would be disruptive to a learning environment. So under influence of substance, creating disruption or obstruction of school programs or activities, creating a threatening environment and creating any other kind of unlawful act in that instance. And so, again, I think it's best that we align with WASDA. It gives just a little bit of clarity and so, but it keeps the spirit the same, meaning that we intend that our buildings are open to our community and our public under appropriate conditions.
Makes sense to me.
Are there other, sorry, Director Vangelassen?
That's okay, no problem. I don't know why we delete that section, or maybe it was added in afterwards. But I was thinking also about our action. I can never remember the term, our action plans?
Action learning project, yes.
Learning projects, thank you. Should that be in here, some of the verbiage there? Are we planning to, because we're talking about welcoming environment? And, or is that too much to put into a policy? Or will that action learning project, would that be incorporated somewhere else?
I think we might want to incorporate that in the procedure, might be a good place to do some of that. So we can talk about, because I think the spirit of a welcoming environment absolutely is conveyed in the policy. But we can talk about the procedures, and that's really what the action learning project was about. Our school-based leaders, central admin leaders spent quite a bit of time talking about what it, what actions were needed so that our community felt welcome. So what does an welcoming environment feel like when you enter a school building? What actions do staff need to take to do that? And so I think in the procedural side, might be an opportunity to incorporate some of that. And so that would be, that's actually a really great suggestion for the procedural work is to include that action learning project language around welcoming environments.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Sorry, just making a note. Are there any other questions, discussion? Okay, so I think what I'm hearing by consensus is that this will move forward for second reading and approval under the retained 4311 with the WASDA model policy language from 4200. And then as a first draft, I see your hand, Director Hamada, so I'm going to stop.
I'm sorry.
No, no, it's fine.
Didn't get unmuted here fast enough. I'm just curious, the signs that are in the buildings, and I've certainly been in enough of the buildings, what do they actually say in the buildings?
So of all of the things that I discussed today and over the past few days, I did not actually ask for the specific language. I was just told that the policy number is referenced specifically. I'm not sure that Mr. Kovach is actually on this call to say, and I am ashamed to say that I am in quite a few buildings as well. And don't actually, I can't quote the language of the sign.
Mr. Kovach is on here.
He is on.
Okay.
Hello, I am here and I'm struggling with my computer, so I apologize. It, I'm staring at a single screen and not you, but I am here.
Would you like to repeat your question? I don't know if Director Kovach heard that.
I'm just curious, because I've been in a lot of the schools. I don't know what the signs say, and I just, if you could help me to understand what the actual posted signs say, I'd be curious.
And I also cannot remember word for word what that does say. It does reference the number 4311. It talks about visitors on campus. It talks about them checking into the building and being accounted for. It, I don't know if the level of detail is not as full as the, the normal policy itself. It doesn't include all of the verbiage that's there. But the signs are on fences with designated walkways onto our campus, near our office areas. And every exterior door, I believe, has a sticker that references the same thing. So there's quite a bit of signage referencing that.
Okay. I'm perfectly fine with that. It just, I mean, the policy, I understand why we have to have it and it's referenced through RCW and all that. But sometimes I just would want to make it as friendly as we could in signage. So perhaps if somebody's coming from a different country into the school that we, you know, all these regulations and stuff might trigger them not to feel accepted or welcome at school. And, and it sounds like they're just pretty generic and and not really so defining that someone would feel unwelcome. So I'll, I'll look for them, but thank you, thank you.
Yes.
Actually, that's going to be a question that I had regarding language. So I, if the policies, I know that, you know, there's instructions and such. And so I would, maybe shouldn't make the assumption that they are also in multiple languages. So anyone walking, anyone coming in could see that same, the same language in there where they could read it and understand.
Yeah, so I, I, in thinking about what Director Hamada said, I do think, you know, we could prioritize the visitor section to the top. I don't know, I feel like that should come first before the contacts with staff and whatnot. So that it does look like, you know, that is priority, is that they are welcome and we encourage them to visit schools. I don't know what everybody else thinks, but I do think that would be better. And that was kind of what I was getting to in the signage and in the policy. I also agree, I think it, in all respects, you want to have, think the best of people and the best of circumstances. And of course, there has to be some provisions if that doesn't happen. But I, I do know a lot of our people that come into some of these schools that I have talked to, and maybe not all, but from different countries, they're oftentimes reluctant to come into the schools. And we just want to encourage that in any way we can. But we also need to follow the law, so I get it.
So what I'm hearing, though, is that there's an interest in the order so that we communicate the welcoming environment piece first with talking about visitors and then put the appropriate conditions or situations in which they have limited access. Okay, other?
That would be my preference.
Yeah. Okay. So next on our agenda, we're going to talk about Policy 3211, I mean, 3207, I apologize. Prohibition of harassment, intimidation and bullying. This is an essential WASDA policy. Our last update was 2016. WASDA model policy had an update in 2019, providing some clarifying language around defining the behaviors, the difference in behaviors of harassment, intimidation and bullying, and creating the legal definition and distinction to prevent confusion. And I believe Suzy is here and will talk more about some of the changes that are there. I will share it on my screen so that you all can follow along. And then I'm going to mute myself, so Suzy, you can take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, President Daniels, Vice President Benninger, members of the board, Superintendent Watts, Ms. Holly. It's nice to be here tonight. As was said earlier, the, the changes in the policy are to align with WASDA policy, which was part of RCW 28A 60477. There weren't substantial changes, but the biggest pieces that were called out were to call out harassment, intimidation and bullying as three separate but related behaviors and that each of those needs to be looked at individually, which was, while they were listed in the former policy, they weren't called out as separate behaviors. There's also reference to specific trainings that are part of this requirement, which are found in the procedure. And then changes to language from perpetrator to aggressor in the language as well. Randy, anything else that you have, you want to add to that part?
No, I think, you know, this year, Director Suzie Whitlock took over as compliance officer, and she was just recently at a state compliance officer training, and they emphasized the need to come back and make sure that our, our, our policy aligns with this. I will say that, you know, we just recently went through CPR and one of the areas was around civil rights. And the, the thing the state, the state has shared with us is that they were really trying to emphasize with different districts that while this harassment, intimidation, bullying is a state law, there's a lot of confusion with the federal harassment laws in terms of non-discrimination, sexual harassment and Title IX and such. And so the policy revisions are really a reflection of trying to help everyone understand there's the state law that is called HIM and then there are the federal laws. And oftentimes, they have different requirements, so you really have to look at them as separate entities. And so it, I feel like it's a good change.
And just for clarity, a CPR is a consolidated program review. So just so people know what that is.
Sorry.
That's okay, I mean other things, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew.
I was thinking health class, I was a little confused, so thank you for clarifying.
It's okay. And in the connection between the HIM policy and process and investigation, aligning that with the civil rights investigation, if it appears that an allegation is, is going that way, that's contained in the updated procedure as well.
I appreciate taking out things that say perpetrator to aggressor. I am not a fan of school to prison pipeline and setting up school to prepare students for prison. And I don't like language that looks like that or sounds like that. So I think anything that we can mitigate that, I think, sounds great. So I appreciate that. I do have a question slash feedback on the intervention piece where it talks about interventions are designed to remediate the impact of the targeted student and others impacted by violence. I really think there needs to be something in there that, you know, the aggressor also needs some sort of intervention too. And so, and that's not clearly stated. It doesn't sound like, it just, we're going to change your behavior, which sounds like discipline, but doesn't necessarily sound like intervention. So that would be my feedback slash question, have we thought about changing that? And what could or would that look like?
I would echo that as well. Just, I just want to echo, and I, I also had the same thought. That was one of the things that still sticks with me from our listening sessions with the state ombudsman. And it was a child who pointed it out that a lot of times, you know, the, you know, the aggressor is also potentially a victim of some type of challenging situation. So I would want to see something like that, too. You know, what we're doing to support the aggressor if they are indeed, you know, a victim themselves, maybe at home or elsewhere.
And Randy, you may have more to add to this, but I think that fits really well within the procedure part of it as well which, which delineates the entire process and the resolution and the next steps and ensuring that that's a component of that. I will tell you that one of the, the tools that the district uses is a, we call it the HIM tracking system, which schools report and follow the, the process. So as I've had a chance to look at those, it's really impressive, the amount of follow-up and work that I'm seeing happen both for the targeted student and the aggressor. And, you know, detailed supports for both students in there. But yes, delineating it in the procedure makes sense.
And, and actually, I just pulled up the, the procedure and I'm looking at that right now. And it is clear that there's, there's a step for, you know, the student that is the aggressor. But there's also a step that really talks about support for the target. Both are covered in our procedure. And I will tell you, when working with schools, that is the normal procedure. They are, they are supporting both, both in this scenario.
I'm, I'm curious if if this occurs in a school and the parents become aware of it, are they aware of the difference in this, how you proceed on these different procedures? Because it's kind of complex. I mean, is there a tool to walk them through this? So if they had a complaint, they'd understand which way to do it or?
Yes, I'm actually very glad you asked that. And I, I say that we have done a lot of work on that this year, really trying to make clear with our building staff who receive these, these concerns, these complaints around the difference, first off, between a HIM and a claim of harassment in, in terms of non-discrimination or sexual harassment. In fact, we've created a whole flow chart checklist for each of them to follow. That is actually quite comprehensive. We, it's still technically in draft form because we have taken it back to the principal several times to take a look at, give us feedback, find out, you know, what would make it easiest for them. As you stated, it is actually a complex issue. And actually, the state, OSPI, when we were going through the process, shared with us, yes, we, we understand that this is actually a very complex issue and there is a lot of confusion around it in the state. And so we've done a number of training sessions with our administrators. And the plan and direction that we've gotten from OSPI is, you know, that we're beefing up our, our, our training for all of our staff beyond just the administrators. Because oftentimes, some other staff get or see something or get the complaint first. And then they need to know where they need to get this in terms of to their administrator and, or for it to be addressed.
I'm extremely happy to hear that, Mr. Heath, because it appears some of the communication that I've had with some of these parents, that issues have drug on for so long that if they, you know, if we, if they were able to follow a system and we could take care of this before it gets, you know, two or three years down the road and everybody's so upset, they can't even remember what happened, but they're just mad. I think it could help us a lot. So I'm really encouraged to hear that. Because, you know, taking care and admitting if we've done something wrong or if they don't understand what we're doing and, and prevention. I'm, I'm a proactive person and I know in this district, there's a lot going on and we're pretty reactive. But I just, any way we can, before it gets to that point where they're boiling mad, that we can do, I appreciate that very much, thank you.
I, I totally agree with you. And I will say that our, we've really encouraged our principals to give us a call in a situation that maybe they're, they're, it could go one way or the other. And in fact, just today, I was working with one of our elementary principals and we were working through it and I reshared the flow chart and the checklist and we walked through it together. And it was like, okay, yeah. So, and they were able to clearly share with the parent, here is your options about how, you know, if you want to make this into a formal complaint and such, so.
Thank you.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is that we, the board is okay with moving this forward for a second reading and, and approval at the subsequent meeting. And I will share, and, and Mr. Heath and team did share the procedures. I will forward those onto the board so that they can see them as they show up on the agenda as well as informational. But you will have them in advance to review.
I, I appreciate, we're going to get the procedures. I still would like to see that in the policy itself, discussing that we intervene with the person who is the aggressor. That's just for me, I think that's really important, even though it appears in our, our procedure, I would still like to see it in the policy.
I agree.
Yes, I mean, basically, yeah, we can, we can work to put some language in. Yes, I mean, basically, yeah, we can, we can work to put some language in around that, uh, especially since it's in the procedure as well.
Okay, thank you. So next on our list is uh forty-three-ten. Relations with law enforcement and other government agencies. This particular policy um is an encouraged policy by WASDA. They provided updates in twenty-eighteen. Um, and they were required to develop um language by our legislature um to address the parameters and protocols for interviewing students on school premises. Um, and they consulted several Washington state um agencies to provide um the appropriate context protocols for the policy language. And um again, Mr. Heath and team are here to talk about um those changes as well. There were some significant changes there and can everyone see on the screen forty-three-ten? Okay. And so um Randy, if you'd like to.
Absolutely. Yes. Um, so some of you actually might recognize some of the language that's in this policy because it's actually, um, we have another policy that is uh similar nation, in nature that we actually revised just a year and a half, two years ago regarding um people that come onto our campuses and interview students um and some real uh procedures around that. We just did not at the same time update uh this, this policy. And so when we were getting ready to introduce the uh school resource officer policy, we realized this one was um not up to date and figured that we needed to get that taken care of. And so it, it clearly outlines um not just law enforcement, but other government agencies, including child protective services and uh immigration and um and their relationships and with, with us, so.
So I, I was thinking that could we have a discussion on the other uh policy regarding SROs?
So absolutely. If the board is interested in having a, a kind of multi-policy conversation, I think that's okay. Um, I will say that um looking at both of these, because I knew that they are um important issues to our board and our community. The one thing that the policy update does clarify is the district's authority in each of these situations. And I think that that's important to note here is that the district maintains the authority um uh unless extreme cases. So for example, um, if in certain, in most instances, a principal has the right, school administrators have the right to protect the interest of the student while on campus. And that is the priority. And, and in very limited cases, is that not the situation? And that extends as, as Mr. Heath said, as far as immigration and other situations as well. So it maintains the district authority in this. And that's an important distinction here. So it's not um giving authority to an, an, an alternative government agency um in this, even though we have a cooperative relationship and our partners, the district is still the authority. Um, and so if you'd like, we can, I can open up uh forty-three-eleven, which um just to quickly, let's talk about the logistics of, of forty-three-eleven. This is the one, forty-three-eleven is the numbering of WASDA's model. For our purposes, I'm going to suggest that we make it forty-three-thirteen would be the recommendation. So close um to the WASDA model numbering, but um so that we don't have to do all the signage with our visitor policy right now. Um, that's what, that's the only difference that I would suggest um here. And this was new, the SRO policy was new to WASDA. It is considered essential. So there's not, that's why everything is in red. It's because it is, it's new to WASDA, it's new to us. I'll give you a chance. Um, I'll put it up on screen and then if board, Randy, if you want to add anything, and then I'll open up to the board to have discussion around the two.
Yes, and I, I want to make sure uh our assistant director um and in charge of sex services, uh Tim Kovach is, is on as well. And he really has been following the legislation from the very, uh, when it was first passed around school resource officers and been tracking that when we waited for the WASDA model policy, um, which did come out. And you know, we were going to bring this for you. But then, of course, we had the closure. We weren't having school resource officers in our, in our schools. And so we thought we would wait to bring this uh when we came closer to having the discussions around the contracts and going forward so that it is a cohesive uh conversation. So we are, we are suggesting that we adopt WASDA model policy as written. We haven't made any changes to it. Uh, there was a couple areas on WASDA model policy. They said we could like go into more detail. Uh, we chose that we, we felt like when reviewing this, that it said what we needed to say. Um, and so we did not make changes to it.
So it's exactly the same as forty-three-eleven WASDA policy.
Hmm, yes.
Again, I really like uh in the second paragraph, uh, the, I believe it's the, the third sentence, the focus of any SRO working in the district is to keep students out of the clerical justice system when possible. Um, because I don't think our community has a full understanding what of our SRO officers actually do. The presentation that I watched that Yakima put on, on all of this and all the different um SROs in different districts we're doing, the programming they're providing, which really has very little to do with policing and more doing with activities and communication. But I, I'm not sure, I mean, I, I, I've had this communicate, this conversation with some community members. And it may be just some community members, but, and I realize it's not all. But their knowledge of what an SRO officer does and why they're there is kind of bent on the policing end of it. And somehow or other, it would be beneficial if we took some time to educate our community, I feel, on, on why they're there and that the kids even leave that, that, you know, several of these kids like them to be there and the reasons they like them there. Um, so I just, I, I just want to make note of that because that'll come up. And uh, there's a group of people that want them all out of our schools, so.
I have some thoughts too. Um, like one about the forty-three-ten. Um, I'm just uncomfortable, like schools are supposed to be safe environments, but there's a, there's a part in here that talks about interrogating students on school premises. And I just, I did, that doesn't sit well for me, even when it, especially when it talks about immigration right before that. And I get that that kind of like cites some um um, some Supreme Court case. I just, I, it just doesn't sit well with me. And so if someone can explain that. Um, one, and so I have some other questions about the SRO policy. And to what uh Director Hamada said, I, I just went to a union conference and there's a huge discussion about whether SRO should be in school or not. It was a giant discussion and it was divided. There was a lot of, but ultimately um my questions related to that, like I want to know, and it doesn't have to be right now, but you can get back to me. But like, I want to know kind of what our current relationship is with law enforcement. And if there's anything in that relationship that needs to be changed. I also want to know, like, how is this aligned with our anti-racist and equity work from the district? Like to work with uh law enforcement and thinking about which students are um having to deal with law enforcement more? Is that meeting our equity lens as we talked about that? And I'm not one saying that we need to have law enforcement out of schools. I just want to ask some questions. I think as we look at this policy, because there are going to be community members who are going to ask these questions and they're going to have some concerns about this as well. And also like, what's the family input or student input on the presence of law enforcement in schools? I know that in, in my school, like law enforcement, our SRO is beloved. They, they help as their assistant coaches of the football team. They do a lot for the school community. And there's a, there's a group of students that like love and appreciate. There's another group of students who get PTSD when they see people in uniform uh with weapons. So it, I think we just need to kind of be open to that. Um, but I'm, I know that we're kind of talking about the policy, but those are kind of questions I want to put into the universe as we kind of discuss this.
Right. And, and, and let me first, I, maybe I should have started with this and I apologize. Is kind of the progression of how we're um going to be talking about school resource officer, officers uh and over the next month. So um knowing that policies need to go in a certain order in terms of first reading, second reading, and maybe adjustments that need to be made. Um, we, we felt like bring this before the board so they can take a look at it, uh, develop questions. Ask clarifying questions. We have a board work session that is coming up here in the uh next uh, within the next month, where we're going to lay out a really um how SROs fit into our overall school safety um and making safe schools. And uh, we've invited our uh police partners uh to be a part of that presentation so that if you have questions of them and their agencies, you'll be able to have the chance to do that. And then, uh, then, you know, at the same time that we're solidifying the, the policy, then the question of the actual contracts will come before and you will be able to see the language in the contracts that we are proposing for our law enforcement partners and be able to give input on that and then make a final decision on whether it is uh not to go, go with those contracts. So that's kind of the progression of the work we're going to have in the next month or so. And I'm, I'm working with that. Yeah.
Yeah, um, I, I know President Daniels has brought this up a number of times. Um, are we speaking with our students or can our students be at this particular work session? It would be good to hear from them. Yes.
Or even maybe like a survey, because I don't know that the students that we want to hear from would, you know what I mean, would be able to attend. But I think if we were able to do some sort of survey, um, because yes, I do um recognize this is a touchy subject, but I, my experience has been the students that I know are, are extremely, they, they are in support of having SROs, they have relationships with them. And so um, I think their voice is huge here. Again, I think there are things that we can do to mitigate some of those community things. For example, when we have a welcome to school event and we have our schedule pickups, we can introduce SROs. We can have them there, you know, sharing who they are, what their role is, because most of the time, community members don't hear about them or parents until there's a problem. So I think if we could, we could, you know, get in front of that. Also, I think, you know, I, I think one of the things that are important to remember is, you know, district staff call law enforcement in. They don't just show up. So I think we need to figure out how we're supporting our adults who are calling the law enforcement officers there because they don't just come. So I think that's a piece that, because then it says their district staff, when district staff brings these agencies in. And so I think that's something that we need to have some conversation around or maybe, you know, whatever that looks like with training. And I also think our SROs, along with everyone else, um, needs to have some sort of bias training. We need to have some sort of equity training that's required because you're right, sometimes those issues of just, you know, um inequitable uh representation of students of color, we know it exists in discipline. And so I think that it's critical for SROs as well as others to have that training, that anti-bias training, um, because they are, they are dealing with our students, they need, and they need it. And so um, those are some things that I would like to see.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with all of that. I, I was going back to the policy, the forty-three-ten. There was some language in there that just, just to kind of follow on this conversation, what President Daniels was saying, you know, with the discipline, there was some language earlier in the forty-three-ten. So I think you're in the forty-three-eleven slash thirteen. No, the other policy, the forty, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Which one is forty-three? There was one where there's language in there that seems arbitrary. And then when we talk about discipline, that was one of the, the things that came up. I think it was even before I was on the board, I saw this, it's, you know, the whole comment about insubordination and things like that and the definition of that. So if you could scroll to the top, it was towards the top of the policy that there was like, um, hold on, yep, no, wait. The primary responsibility scrolled, the first paragraph. So the um, the first paragraph, staff will be responsible for holding students accountable for infractions of school rules, which may include minor violations of the law occurring during school hours or at school activities. Um, I don't know, when I, when I, I don't know, it just seems like I, I want to make sure that we are not targeting students or certain students are, are getting away with things and, and other students are not. Um, and, and it's not falling down racial lines and things like that. Because what, you know, what's a minor, what's a minor response violation of the law? And, you know, are we being consistent? So, you know, if, if, I just want to make sure that something's not so vague that it's, you know, it's utilized when, with one group of students and not utilized with others or looking the other way. So I don't know, this, the language in the beginning just seems like it's open to interpret, you know, adult interpretation and leaves things open to um potential bias.
I agree, but I think that's a training issue, not a language issue, right? So I think, I think that's a training issue because the language isn't, the language isn't biased in the way that it's, it's just how people interpret it, like you said. And so any policy language is going to be that way. I think it really is a training issue. And so the expectations and the procedures, I think, will have, should have something around, you know, or there should be some type of bias training or expectation as you implement the policy. So I think that the language itself is, isn't, you know, it's not, it doesn't have any um bias, but it's staff being responsible. It's always staff. So that's what I'm saying. So I think we have to make sure that our staff are trained and have an understanding about implicit bias and about, you know, disproportion and all of those things. Um, so.
Can, can we just add that language in the policy? I mean, I think it's important enough at some point, you know, to, to make sure that we are doing the training then, you know, and that it's kind of policy is what we're asking for in the procedure. So it, would it be reasonable to add that to this policy to make certain that staff is trained to, you know, act without bias?
I mean, I, I, nobody's going to say no, because that's really the answer. I mean, yeah, after the question, nobody's going to say really no, that's not, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
More to it than that. I'm just, it was crickets, really?
Yeah.
Well, we, it's a larger conversation.
Yeah.
And Director Bettin, President Daniel Sims, the board, um, Dr. Watts, Ms. Antella, we did cover the bias training and the changes in the race and equity policy updates uh last week when we went through the race and equity work and the different trainings there that the Equity Council presented when we talked about those and um specifically some trainings there. And I know uh, we have talked about the difference between how, how far we can go with required and the bargaining that's required behind requirements for every. Um, I think we are moving closer to having um to being unified in our approach, I will say, across, across the district as we continue our equity work. But the language changes in the policy and procedure around training um did change quite a bit. If we go back to that, and you will see that on the May twelfth for second reading. Um, and we did hear your, your uh, we did take all of your input and make those changes. Um, and you'll see that on the twelfth as well.
I do think, oh, go ahead.
Uh, no, so at least it should cross-reference to that. And I guess that's, that training piece, it does talk about training and program review. But it doesn't get into that bias specific train training. And so I'm wondering if that can be cross-referenced or am I missing it?
So in the, in the SRO uh proposed policy piece here, this is, what we're seeing here is what mirrors the recent uh Senate Bill twelve sixteen that uh was presented, some general information before the board. I believe it was around uh September. This information then was uh, that Senate bill is now uh RCW and it's been cha, it's now RCW twenty-eight A three-two-zero. three-two-zero-one-two-four. And that outlines very specifically each training category that the S, the School Resource Officer now has to do annually, along with the accountability pieces that's mentioned, their interactions with students that had any interaction with discipline. That's going to be a state piece that's in there. And there's a lot of other details. It's not in this specific piece here, but it is referenced and all of that is outlined in the RCW. So that is, that is really good to see because it was everything that a lot of people were asking for, for the SROs to have and that bias pieces in there. And that's going to also trickle down to school safety and security staff also to have similar training. And so that's coming in the future.
So I'm hearing President Daniels and Director Bettinger saying, is to say that, to call that out in this particular policy. Because that is a component, we're saying that they're of course going to be doing the community policing and there's quite community oriented policing. So there's the positive, you know, part of what school resource officers do, but there's also an expectation of conduct. And so I guess I'm wondering, yeah, I'm agreeing. Or should that not be called out on this policy? I know it's in the RCW. But why couldn't we call it out?
Yeah, I, I think cross-referencing the race and equity policy is a good might, you know, would be a good reminder. Because I don't know how many people looking at the policy, and I do appreciate Mr. Kovitch that you told us about the law. But it, you know, I haven't looked at the RCW and I should now. But I think that I would like to see if we can just add a cross-reference to our race and equity policy that would make me feel better.
I'll echo that. And also, I'm kind of thinking about like what training that SROs, what the kind of training that SROs get before they work in schools. And I'm not familiar with that. And I don't know what that includes. And I know that law enforcement is trained very differently than educators are trained. And so that would be a little bit of my concern is like how that training is done and before they get into a school.
Yes, and that is, there is a school resource training program that is a forty hours. And then there's an additional piece to that. And, and that's written out in another, not in this policy, but that's something offered out there for SROs. And in Kent, we require that before an SRO comes on board. And additionally, with that training piece and time you're mentioning, again, there's also some, you're not seeing it here, but you're going to see it in the near future. There is some other training requirements for safety and security officers that will mirror that SRO piece. And it will, it is outlined, but you're not seeing the twelve points of those training topics that are listed here. You're not seeing that in here.
And, and I'm, I was, I was trying to look real quick to see and I, did we put the model MOU?
No, we did not, no.
So, so I'm wondering if, because we, we, we have to be careful because once again, the SROs are not our employees. They are contracted employees of other law, of other entities, law enforcement. And my, if I remember correctly, and if not, then we can work to do it, but the, the more specifics around the training and the other pieces will be in the contract. And so what that will say is that as, you know, if it was the Kent Police Department, the Kent Police Department agrees that this is the training that our officers will receive if they're going to serve in our schools. And we're saying this is, we're agreeing and we're saying that these are the trainings that we expect. And, you know, because those might change over time and other things that it maybe is more appropriate to be in that contract that we, we sign on a more regular basis so that both entities are regularly looking at the agreement between the two entities and saying, yes, we agree, this is the training, this is the training, this is the training that is needed. And I'm, I, I think it spelled it out more, but I can't remember exactly.
So I have the language up. I believe it's in the paragraph here on the policy. I have it up on the screen, agreement, training and program. It talks about how the law enforcement agency is responsible for the training of their employee and it states the SRO is their employee. I think that for, I, I value and appreciate the conversation that's being had around the topic. Because the SRO policy is new and WADA is labeling it as essential. And this is the first round of this and it's tied to state law. I would suggest that we initially not deviate too far away from the model policy in the first adoption. If there are changes in the language that we'd like to see or specific pieces called out, I would suggest to the board that we make those changes in procedure. And then hold the contract, as Mr. Heath suggested, that the contract reflect those intentions. Rather than putting some of that in the policy. Because at that point, we would kind of be standing out there on our own in making those changes. So given that this is the first go around, that would be my. But I understand that the board may reach a different consensus, but that's what I would recommend, given that this is the first step in this and then that we call out other things in the procedure. And then to make sure that they are reflected in the.
So even the cross-referencing, you feel, Dr. Harmon?
I think we can cross-reference, well, because the equity, race and equity policy is our own. So I think we can add that cross-reference. WADA would know that to have that to add. So I think we can add that piece without question. But changing the actual language of the policy, I, I would be hesitant to do that. Because it's new for WADA and it's new for us and, and the state law is new. So I would, I not want to do that too soon.
That makes sense.
And I, I did read thoroughly that law when it came out in BAST. And I was asked to testify on that, several points on that. And it, it is a big change. And it's really, and it's really imperative to show that we're really taking an emphasis on that in the state of Washington. So I guess because I saw all those changes made from a state level that I would be in your corner, Dr. Harmon, to perhaps see how this plays out before we make any major changes. So.
Well, and the language, while not perfect, it does make an attempt to address some of the concerns. Not that everyone does a close read of policy, but it does do a good job of trying to, to, to address the ultimate intent here. And so it calls out right before the sentence that you called out, Director Hamada. It talks about the role of SRO on campus and it lays out those three parts. And in, in, in the visitor policy, it was interesting, the board talked about the order of wanting to convey a welcoming environment first. And so wanting that to be first, those three parts that are laid out are educator, informal counselor, and then law enforcer. And so if order matters, it prioritizes the role of the SRO in policy. And that's something that can continue to be communicated and reiterated. Educator first, informal counselor second, law enforcer third. And then it continues to go on in the next paragraph, reiterating a similar concept of primary responsibility for maintaining proper order, rest and reside with the principal or designate. So again, placing the responsibility of order and in the hands of school district staff and employees. And so that gets back to what we can control as a district and have some influence over, which is the training of staff and those pieces. And that's where we may be able to help and, and get to a consensus around what exactly are examples of minor law infractions and violations? So that we get to this similar mindset and thinking of something that can be subjective. Something that is more common of an understanding and a rule and a, a practice in Kent School District. So I think some of it is there, but because this is new and such a sensitive topic, I see where there could be some concern. But I think it's best that we align with WADA for right now. And then as this continues to play out, we'll have an opportunity to make our own Kent lens changes as well as follow any updates that might happen across the state.
Let's make one suggestion. I agree with you. I hate, I'm going to even say loathe the informal counselor piece on there. I, I think, I don't know how many hours counselors go to school to get a degree or whatnot. A lot of the, I don't know how many hours law enforcement get of mental health counseling. I, I don't like that in there. I, I'm willing to agree that as a first read and let community have input, if they want to come to a board meeting and speak to this, I just don't like that piece. That's just my personal thing, but I may be the lone wolf on that.
Yeah, because unfortunately, our counselors really don't get the opportunity to counsel. So I think they are informal, like when they're talking. I, I've seen it happen a lot where they meet kids in the parking lot. What are you doing out here? What's going on? That's kind of informal. That's what I think about when I hear informal counseling. It's those conversations to figure out what's happening with the kids and those types of things. So, so I, you know, I hear you, but I feel a little differently about it. I think that's exactly what they do. So, yeah. So what I'm hearing is that we're going to, the board is willing to make a, a first attempt at a second reading at a subsequent meeting. And that the board would like to see the, I think there's draft MOU language and, and procedural language that can be forwarded to the board as well for informational purposes.
Yeah. And, and just to let you know that the draft MOU language that WADA has, has written up has already been shared with our three law enforcement partners. Kent Police, Covington Police and King County Sheriff. And so Assistant Director Kovich have already sent that on to them and said, we're, you know, we're going to be looking for this language in the contracts that we are, are brought before us. So it won't be a surprise.
Okay. So, um, just to be clear, the, we had a, a kind of joint conversation about two separate policies. And so what I believe I'm still hearing, just want to clarify, is that we're going to move both forward for second reading and action by the board. We'll share the subsequent supporting informational documents, MOU procedure. And then as need be, we need to make change. We can do that. So here, okay, I was like, so here are no objections. I'm going to move on. And we are going to have our our next conversation. And kind of our final activity for the evening is around fund balance. And this is interesting because we've had quite a few robust conversations around the policy as a school district. And went through, I would say, some significant updates. I believe in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. In terms of following and describing the types of funds in the district and all of those pieces, I'm going to show you WADA's model, just rather quickly. So WADA's model is fairly simple. It gives two options for what the language around the fund balance should be. And it's just really around the percentage that should be set forth. The interest of the district and just kind of lays out there what portion is, should be reserved or set aside. Even though it is not assigned. And it gives no recommendation on the percentage or the value that is set for holding a fund balance. Kent School District's fund balance policy conveys the same idea, but it does a, a, I think a better job of helping to educate those that may look at this policy and the types of funds that a district has. And what may impact a fund balance. And then, last but not least, after doing all of those definitions, it finally defines the amount that Kent School District should hold in its fund balance. What's important to note here is that interestingly enough, although there is WADA model policy supporting this work, it is discretionary. And, and as part of the theme of tonight and the ongoing work of our policy updates, this policy is also misnumbered. It should technically be sixty-twenty-two and not six thousand-two. And so whatever we decide to do this evening, or whatever the board decides to do this evening and moving it forward, I would suggest that if nothing else, we update and align the policy number to match WADA model. I would suggest and recommend that we actually keep the language of the current Kent School District policy. One, our language is, is, our policy is more current than WADA model. WADA model was updated in two thousand and eleven. Ours was updated in two thousand and fifteen. And it's more robust in terms of the definition. So that would be the policy recommendations in terms of aligning it with WADA model. And then the numbering. So really quickly, I need to, I need to clarify a statement that I made because I, I thought about what I said and how it could have come across. And so I don't want to be misunderstood when I said counselors don't really count because they don't have time to counsel with the workload and the amount of students they serve and that type of thing. Not because it's not the work that they don't do. So I just wanted to clarify, it's not that anything on them. I'm just saying, I know how many students they serve and they really just don't have time in order to, to make that, to play in that, to serve in that role. So that's, I just want to clarify that. So there's no misunderstanding about what I said, because I know that happens all the time. So, thank you.
We got you, we understood.
Well, you might, but let me tell you. So I don't want to mad at me. I love our counselors. I, I know what they do. So, yeah, that was not to discredit anything that they do. So.
Thank you for the clarification, though, President Daniel. I'm married to one, so I also know exactly what you speak and I can attest, I know exactly what you meant. Thank you for sharing that, though.
I thought we reviewed this, didn't we? I thought we did this a couple of years ago, didn't we? So we did. So I, I knew someone was going to get there. So that, so the question then stands, so Jewel. If the policy doesn't need to be changed and it's more current than WADA's, why on earth are we having this conversation tonight? Is there nothing better for us to do than to do this work again? Well, President Daniels and Director Vanga Baslam, you may remember that about, I think, eighteen months ago, I tried to engage the board in a conversation around fund balance. Again, and so we brought this forth, you didn't make any changes. But I brought it forth and I tried to engage you in a conversation that we're going to, I'm going to try again tonight. Of what does a fund balance mean? And so we've, I, just, just, just trust, trust the process. And so we have a conversation because the, the WADA gave us no guidance on what percentage or what dollar amount is the right amount to have in a fund. When the work that we engaged in before was what should that amount be? Because, so we've had some, some, some conversations in Kent, we've had our challenges, we've rebounded. And there, what we, what policy should do for a district is provide, be our guide for what we should be held accountable to. But I also believe that our accountability should be logical, should be reasonable and should align to something. And so I'm not saying that it doesn't, I'm just, I want us to think through and I want our board to think through what this means. And so what, where am I going with this? Let's talk about our fund balance. Under our current policy, it says that we need to have five percent reserved. Reserved of what? Unassigned fund balance of five percent of the previous year's actual expenditures. So, okay. Five percent of what we actually spent the previous year. So man, so what's that dollar about, Jewel? Glad you asked. It is approximately eighteen million, seven hundred thousand dollars. That's five percent. That's a decent amount of money. And so then you say, okay, what's a fund balance for? And why would we set that aside for our emergencies? Emergencies of all kinds, from the big to the small. Having lived the past year that we've lived across our nation, I would say that lots of districts nationally are probably using fund balance dollars, had it not been for ESER, our federal government intervening, would be using their fund balance to address some of these concerns and needs. Well, nineteen million sounds like, I'm sorry, eighteen million, eighteen million, seven hundred thousand, sounds like quite a bit of money. And it is. Except what would you think it costs to operate Kent School District on a daily basis? Except, what would you think it costs to operate Kent School District on a daily basis?
That's what I thought our conversation was. Didn't we talk about having like a three month? I mean, I thought we talked through this.
We did, but we never took it action. And the reason that the action was never taken was we were getting ready to move into a board transition with new membership.
Okay.
It made sense that the previous, the leaving members did not necessarily want to engage in. Because it was gonna happen within the next several months. It was bad timing on my part, I think, bring it forward at the time. And we just had it circle back around to this as a conversation.
Got it.
We moved into kind of like really attacking the essential policies, all of the ones related to COVID. And now, because it's budget season, and I think we probably are a good place to have the conversation again. We'll say, well, what, what, what would we think it costs a day to operate Kent School District? And full operation, so think lights, heating, electricity, eating students, educating students, all of the pieces. That go into having a school day happen. There's no wrong answers, just.
Yeah, I I don't even know. Yeah. I feel like you're gonna tell me that eighteen million is like, won't even cover a month.
Right. So, so, okay, so, uh, so based on, and to be fair, we didn't, you know, the team did not just look at this past school year. Because it would be unfair to use this past school year to get to an average daily, you know, amount. But they went back further than just the school year and, um. Average daily to run Kent School District is one point five million dollars a day. Now, that's all in. So I mean, again, it's not small money, but think about what we do in the course of a day. Think about how many adults are served, how many children, how many adults are employed, how many children are served? And all of the ways that that needs to happen. That covers all of those pieces of that work. Now, one point five million and approximately eighteen million, seven hundred dollars. We would get by with less than two weeks.
Yeah, that's terrible.
Well, I, that's not fair, slightly less than three working weeks, so we'd have about thirteen days.
But in any budget, that's terrible.
Well, and and I, and so I think about it if from another context, so let's put it in a different context. So these are all kind of value statements. With certain extent of of what we believe this should be. Um, if we spend eighty-five percent of our budget on staffing and people that support the day-to-day work. If something were to happen, and for whatever reason, we didn't get our portion man or or anything happened. Would we be able to survive a month? Or would we be able to convince our employees that getting paid for thirteen workdays out of the month instead of the full twenty-one is appropriate and acceptable? No, no. Um, and that doesn't mean, so it doesn't mean that our fund balance is wrong. It doesn't mean that it's too little. Again, it's thinking about what a fund balance is for and what we intend to do. Um, and so that would beg the question of, someone asks, so what's the general rule? What are other districts doing? What do, what does the the law require? There's no state law, there's no R C W or WAC that is gonna decide this for us. Um. But I thought you might ask, and so I, hopefully you can still see my screen. I'm sharing a, um, a look and and thank you to, to Ms. Holly. Um, who looked at what other districts. So this is actually a document, um. That is available and can and can be shared, so you can see, um, other school districts and what they recommend or what they have available. Um, and what they require. Um, some districts do not call out an amount in their policy. Some do, it varies, it's it's five to six percent. Um, I think it's, it, like Washington does not have a policy. U L S is interesting, um, if they, and I don't know their exact finances, but the fact that they call out thirteen to fifteen days probably means that they're sitting in the. The five percentage range like we are, that would cover about, you know, between thirteen and fifteen days, depending on what our prior year expenditures were. Um. And so there's not a lot of, um, Seattle, it's between three and five percent. So they give themselves a range. Um.
That's interesting, and you wonder like where that started, like, did one district just pluck five percent out of the, of the air? And so other districts said, oh, okay, they're doing five percent, so. You know, we'll do five percent as well, or they're doing thirteen to fifteen days, which is about five percent. So that would be interesting to know.
And so there's not any necessarily, and I'm not saying that we need to follow what another district is doing, but it does beg the question, so how are other districts setting their fund balance? What, what would be reasonable or what's difficult? Um, so then we started thinking about what other external entities. Um, you know, kind of accounting and and management entities, what they would recommend. And so, um, while was the Washington's, um, School Director Association does not necessarily make a formal recommendation. Um. Huh. So this is what happens when you have all your websites set up, because you know you're gonna be projecting and you forget what order they're in. So Oregon's, um, School Board Association actually had a nice article about, um, this. And so it's in the, in the presentation that's on Board Docs, there's a link to this article. And it talks about, you know, how much is enough and what might be appropriate. Um, in terms of advising school board directors, um, of what they might want to set. Now, what's interesting about this is, um. Here we are, sorry, I'm trying to see you all's faces and also do the article and you can't do both. Um, when it talks about this, it talks about between five and eight percent is their recommendation. Um, they, they make some caveats about what they consider an average-sized school district. Um, about six thousand students, so we're a little bit larger than average by Oregon standards. Um. And then it talks about other entities that provide, um, you know, marks. So the Government Finance Officers Association, um, so it's a minimum of, you know, they say no less than five. Um, to fifteen percent of its general fund operating revenues, or no less than one to two months of regular general fund operating expenditures. Um, and then it gives things to consider, the size of your district, ability to predict, you know, your revenues, um. Anticipated potential, um, expenditures that might be pending, other factors that you can't control. Um, and there are actually stipulations in our current policy. So our fund balances can address some of those things. So they are, um, in addition to our unassigned fund balance, and that's where our, um. Our reserves and what we're talking about in that policy. Um, we do have other places where we can commit funds or assign funds if we think we're anticipating. Um, something that has not happened yet, so maybe a legal settlement or a larger programmatic shift, um, that we're gonna invest in. So for example, um, in La, in the nineteen twenty budget. Um, that was adopted by the board, we actually called out and, um, assigned, um, fund balance for Core Twenty-four work. So that we have dollars assigned to, um, start the work of that community school work. Um, and so that just provides the context. I did not necessarily think that the board would reach a consensus tonight on where to move or if they were open to moving the fund balance at all. But I wanted to start the conversation around what does our fund balance? And what might be an appropriate place to place that? So knowing that, um. Um. What it takes daily to operate the district, and it hasn't changed much. So since our last conversation, um, with the board around what it takes to operate the district. Um, there hasn't been a large shift in the average daily, you know, operational cost. Um. And so what would, um. If we think about what would a month's worth of fund balance reserves look like? And we say that twenty-one working days is a typical month. Um, we'd be talking about close to, um, you know, oh, I think it's a little less than thirty-one million dollars.
Yep. Let me ask a question, Dr. Harmon, that I don't have the answer to.
That's what the space is for.
If a district goes belly up, does the state stand behind them?
So.
State of Washington.
Kind of, sort of. Um, but what happens is that there's a lot of things that happened before that. So there's quite a bit of, of support, guidance, redirection.
Right.
Um, um, from the state before it gets to that point.
And takeover, and, oh, yeah, I get it.
Right, right, right. I mean, so, so, eh. I suppose anything is possible, um, but it would take quite some, some. Some hard work and a complete abandonment of duties and responsibilities on behalf of quite a few adults for a school district to go belly up. So, um, it's not that. I think about it in context of, of a fund balance supporting things that are outside of a district's control. So here is a, a, a. A low possibility, but a real possibility of something that could have happened, possibly. It it would take a, you know, a few things also, you know, a few shifts, but it's, it wasn't beyond the complete reason, but we wouldn't have expected it. So suppose, um, during our last, um, November elections for change, um, for presidential election. And suppose the ongoing political debates of of which party appropriately won the election. Continued on through December and into January. At the time when Congress, our congressional leaders at the federal level were also on break and budget was on hold. And we, you know, every, I don't know if who, if you all pay much attention to, oh, over the past few years, every December, January. Um, Congress and the House have had to do kind of a budget carryover extension to kind of keep the lights on at the federal level and make sure money is flowing and and. Until they could agree upon a budget. But suppose this past January. The parties couldn't get themselves together because they were too busy discussing which party actually won the election, so they were not attending to what was happening with budget. And for that reason, federal budgets kind of stopped. Now, there are concessions in place that would protect federal employees and keep some essential duties happening. But for the most part, other entities like the Department of Education, like USDA, which feeds our children, may not have had monies moving. And in that instance, no one has told school districts not to operate. What might a school district do or use to continue those operations? Now, the state might have intervened to put in place some, some stopgaps had they had that availability and were they. Able to quickly make those decisions and turn around, but in the meantime, the school district would have had to operate with the cash and reserves that they have on hand. And so while that example may not be completely one hundred percent something that could have happened, we weren't too far off. From that possibility, especially when you throw into the bag that we were dealing with a, a, a worldwide pandemic at the time. So, um, like I said, for lots of reasons, I think it's time for us as a district to start to consider what our fund balance means. What might be an appropriate amount, um, or if nothing else, what might that represent? So it's perfectly okay for it to remain five percent, as long as we recognize that five percent represents approximately. Two and a half work weeks, I mean, two and a half work weeks of funding.
So, um, one of the things that always bothered me is that it's not the five percent, but five percent of the previous year's actual general fund expenditures. And I noticed the was those calling for not prior years, but this year's as an option. So I'm wondering what would, what would be difficult for us to change that language? Uh, we can have a range, uh, but then we would talk about our current. Year quarterly or something to that effect, so that it covers three months, um. Budget, uh, percentage of the three months of budget, I don't know. What would prevent us from doing this year's?
I don't think there's anything that prevents us from saying that we want to have the current years. And the difference is it's anticipated expenditures versus when it's a prior year, you know what you've, you know exactly what you've spent in the past, if that makes any sense. There's nothing that would prevent you from saying it. It's just the difference in one being kind of, we expect to spend this much. And so as a result, we're gonna set aside X number of dollars in savings, you know, for emergencies. Versus, we know we spent this much in the past, and so we're gonna set aside this much to make sure that we could cover it in the future.
Yeah, and I think every year we're going to cover at least what we spent previous year, um, hopefully. Um, and it's only gonna get better in that sense, uh, but then not necessarily. So I mean, I feel like we need to look at the current situation and not so much what's happened in the past. I mean, obviously, our budget is going to be bigger this year than previous year. Um. So, yeah, I just don't really understand why we would rely on the previous year in that sense.
I think that's something that if that's of interest of the board and a consensus, it can be the current years. Expend, the, the, the anticipated expenditures would, what it would likely be what the language would say, rather than prior years' known expenses. Um, I think there's, there can be and should be more conversation around what the right amount is. I think, um, while most people, um, m- might not feel comfortable or would want to have more comfort or security around having multiple months. Of operations in terms of savings or or in fund balance. Um, when we're talking about, um, a one point five million dollars operations daily and you talk about three months. We're talking about, you know, we're getting into the, you know, ninety-five million dollars kind of monies. Um, and that probably. In the same way that it would be unlikely that a school district would go belly up. I would be surprised to think of an emergency situation for a school district where they would need to utilize. That kind of money, you know what I mean, over, over a, a period of time. So I think there's something to, you know, what that means and and, you know, one month, two months, three months.
I think, I think, Dr. Harmon, though, you're a visionary, and I think this conversation is probably well past being had. I also think you have to bring the community along with it. I think if people under, you know, a lot of people say, oh, they got eighteen million in their fund balance. Why don't they, you know, they could do this, the, I don't think they have any idea of the crisis that can occur so fast in a budget. Uh, when you're talking about this is only gonna last for X amount of days. I think, along with perhaps slowly looking at. A minimal increase, an educational piece on this would be so important. Um. But I think, I honestly think, in what's coming forth and everything I see, that people are not thinking this way. And they used to think this way a long time ago, but it's become so unpopular too. I think we need to go back a little bit more and be, you know, really look at our numbers and visionary our numbers. And not get carried away, but start moving towards something that's more reasonable. But the other part of it is, you've got to do an educational piece for people to understand the reasoning behind it. Yep. But I think, I appreciate your conversation, really, I do.
I think that when you talk about percentages, it's, it's, it's easy for, for each of us to talk about whether or not we're in compliance or out of compliance with fund balance in terms of a percentage. But when you talk about what the number of days that we could sustain our operations, that's something that means something to every single individual. So they understand that whether we're talking about a large organization that has a multimillion-dollar budget, you can still put that into the context of understanding it from your household budget. Uh, you know, how long could I survive off of my savings if I had? And that's essentially what we're talking about when we talk about fund balance, if we had an emergency. Um, so, um, like I said, I, I wasn't expecting that the board would necessarily reach a consensus tonight or make a decision. But I thought I would take a chance in in re-engaging in that conversation.
Um, so, um, I think one thing that would be helpful, I appreciated the research done with the other school district. So if we could use those examples and say, for Kent, if we were to use these examples, what would that look like? You know, that would be helpful, just all those different scenarios and whatever your proposed scenario might be.
Okay.
Um, but I would like to kind of also look at current year's expenditures and, um, in the same. I mean, I think there were some of the options did say current years. Um. Because I feel like it doesn't have to be three months, but I, I think it was P L up had the ten to fifteen days. What would that look like? You know, that would be good to see.
And I think, I just think this country is, needs to be thinking in this method a lot more than they are today. In every aspect, preparing, instead of.
Every bit of their paycheck is gone at the end of the month and they're in a crisis, you know? But then it gets into, you know. Wages have to increase and on and on and on. But I mean, thinking about these things. This way is the way of the future for more balance in our society instead of less, in my opinion.
So, Dr. Harmon, are you suggesting, what I think I hear you're saying is that you suggest that we take out a percentage and we change it to. Potentially uh, change it to days, we'd be able to operate for X amount of days?
I would prefer, um, because I think that's something that is um, it's tangible all the way around. I mean, from, from the public understanding this, from the board talking about this, from operations internally as we prepare budget. Um, I think it's, it's, it's something that is, is, is just more tangible for people to understand and get our heads around. Um, because it's very clear, um, we either have the dollars to operate during this time period or we don't. Um, and so that would be my, my preference is that, like, the rationale around it just seems to be more logical and, and tangible for people.
The word finite comes to mind. You mentioned, we talked about that before. That, that does certainly resonate.
And like I said, while, uh, but what exactly what the right number of days is. Um, kind of depends. Like I said, it, that, that is. Like quite a few of the conversations that we've had when we talk about policy work, that's where the tough job happens. Uh, we have to put a philosophy to paper in terms of policy. Um, and so that's something that we can continue to talk about. Um, it's not something, like I said, we're not out of compliance with policy. It's not necessarily that the policy needs to be updated, other than I would like to renumber it. And make it sixty-twenty-two at some point. Um, but um, other than that, it, it really is just something to kind of mull over.
Hmm. Could, could you um, scroll down? I'm sorry, could you scroll down to the where it says the percentage in our policy? Oh, thank you. Wasn't that far down?
And so what, I think the last time we did review this, so we made sure that um. There were the, the general steps of like, what happens when the district is not in compliance? What should happen? What's the timeline? None of those things am I recommending changing. Like I said, I think that our, our description of the policy is more robust than was just. But it actually is informative and helpful and making it very clear. I think, just like I said, the last piece of that is, is making the understanding of the actual dollar amount a little more concrete for, for people to understand.
Yeah, I think um, I, I think if it was, again. I think if it said, you know, the fund balance said, I think what, I can't remember which district it was and you don't need to go back to it, but it's like. You know, if it said a minimum unassigned a five, unassigned fund balance to run the district for twelve to fifteen days. Which is approximately X percent, you know? Because, you know, I think then for people who see percent and people who see. You know, days, I think, you know. That would be helpful. That's be helpful for me. Because without defining that, what, what it costs and, and what it costs to run the district, obviously. You know, this year per day is going to be different next year based on all kinds of different things, you know, but at least. It would give people a sense of it's, you know. That, that really, you know, five percent fund balance is only, like you said, I think I wrote it down. Um, you know, the.
I think we get to thirteen days at our current operational cost. And so.
Right.
You know, it sounds like a lot of money, but when you put it to what, you know, we'd have to use it for, it's like, oh, well.
Yeah, I think, I think if it was something like, you know, the, a kind of a, a combination. And I don't disagree that, you know, I'm not sure, I'd have to do, I want to do more research um, on um. Director Vengadossam's proposal. She's obviously been on the board a lot longer than me and. Has probably bigger, greater insight on this than I would. Um, so I don't oppose. Considering that too, you know, using the current year. Um, but yeah, I think a combination, maybe just to say. You know, fifteen to twenty-one days even, that would be a whole month, right? If you said fifteen to twenty-one days, which is approximately this percentage, you know, which gives us some leeway. And I think um, I think it might serve. You know, kind of also what Director Hamada said, you know, to educate people. On, you know, what it really is costing to spend to, to. Run a district, right? Um, you know, the one point five, one point five million dollars a day. Um, seems huge, but it's really, you know, from small person, you know what I mean?
Right.
It's putting things in context for people, I guess, is what I'm trying to. I took a long time to say, putting things in context in two different ways, you know?
And so like I said, I, I appreciate the board kind of taking this walk with me, especially for those who've heard it before. Um, but I, I thought it was, it was timely. It's the right season to kind of start talking about this again. It's budget season. We're starting to plan kind of long term as we think about our learning acceleration plan for our district. We want to make sure that we maintain our sound fiscal um, practices as well. Um, and I was not expecting that the board necessarily take an action on this tonight. So I'm not saying that it needs to move forward even. For a second reading of anything right now at the next meeting. But I do think that I will follow up with some of the information that the board has asked for so that we can continue the conversation. I think Director Vengadossam, if you were saying something, I think you're muted.
I said, thank you. That sounds good.
So if there are.
I'm wondering, Dr. Harmon, excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Dr. Harmon, um. I'm wondering how this piece fits in with a lot of our. Um, partners in what we do here in their contracts. Uh, the conversation of them having an understanding of what needs to be in a fund balance and. What they would think would be in a fund balance and how long that fund balance would last. I mean, are we crossing boundaries if we start to. Um, infiltrate those conversations with uh, some of our unions?
So I would say that we don't typically negotiate policy or accounting procedures with our labor partners. However, I do think um, one of the ways of talking about this in terms of the number of days. Actually makes this tangible to every employee, whether they're represented um, part of a represented labor group or not. Um, I think every employee intends and believes that they would work for their twenty-one days in the month and then get paid for all twenty-one of those days in a typical month. Um, regardless of what larger regional, national, local emergencies are happening that would prevent. Um. New apportionments coming in to be able to cover those dollars. So I think when you think about it that way, um, not being a part of a represented labor group. I would appreciate knowing that the organization that I work for has considered having enough money in the bank to cover the salaries from a month. Um, but I don't know how they would respond. Um, I don't think that it, it necessarily infringes upon anything with our labor groups because we negotiate. Um, salary increases every, not every year, but I mean, on a schedule of, per the CBA with our labor partners. And that's factored into our annual budget, no different. We have, we have a fund balance policy right now. And that still takes into account all of those negotiations and decisions. So I don't necessarily think it would offend or, or cross any lines. Um, like I said, I, I think it just presents it a different way of saying, how long could we survive if this were the case? Now, they may have feelings about, well, you know, should it be three months, two months, one month? Um, but I think most would be surprised that our current policy says, you know, thirteen days, which is not a full year-long month.
Sorry, I've been quiet. I've been trying to process, um, because it's a, it's a lot to kind of think about. And because I'm, the way I think about it is, there's the, there's the fiscal responsibility side of, we need to have. Um, you know, money in case of emergency, we should have a fund balance and there should be one. And then the other side is like, we're not a bank. We don't need to stockpile tons of cash. Because we provide services and we need to give those services that we provide and it's finding what that balance is. The um, people on the board, the district leaders are going to have one idea. Families, community is going to have another idea. And that's why I appreciate what Director Hamada said about asking labor partners and other groups. Like what, where is that? Not necessarily like negotiating, but like, where's that line? And I, and I'm not a budget person, so I don't know, finance is not my jam. But um, I appreciate the people who do that work and show it to us. And I appreciate that a lot. And so it's like, what would, like, where's the middle? Where's the balance? I guess that's kind of where I'm thinking, what I'm trying to process. Because both are important and, you know, but we have to have a balance. So that's where I'm at. So nothing to help you, but just my thoughts.
I would, I would not disagree. I agree. Um, I think there are, 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 like I said, I, I would, and this is a personal opinion. Even though we're sitting in this, in this setting, I would say that three months is probably too high. Um, because that's ninety million dollars. And then I think we start to get into a different realm of, you know, what are we saving it for? Um, and I think some would argue that when you put it in the context of, well, what we currently are saying is about thirteen days, maybe that's not enough. But there's a lot of space between thirteen days and three months. Um, so I, I absolutely understand that. Um, and that's why I said, I don't think that we're ready to necessarily make a decision, but I wanted to just kind of get that. Started, um, get the board to start thinking about um, what this might look like. Um. Um. And what might be the right, you know, place to move forward. So thank you, Director Benno. Um, I agree. Um, and are there any other closing? So right now, like I said, I'm not planning to move this forward for second reading. I think the follow-up is additional information.
Yeah, just quickly, um, I mean, I think one of the things that uh, maybe I wasn't clear either. Um, on uh, mentioning the three months. Um, so it would be helpful to kind of see the different percentage rate, you know, would that be helpful? To budget um, on a monthly basis, you know, with a different percentage versus. A high percentage like five percent for fifteen days, you know, what would make sense? So I guess that's kind of the analysis I was thinking about.
Yes, and I took notes to kind of give you a, a couple of different options and see a multiple, multiple ways to see this expressed. Um, and, and like I said, I, I agree that there are going to be lots of thoughts of, um. I think we could, like I said, I think we're, no matter the, the, the stakeholder you, you ask. I think there'd be some general consensus around what might be too little and what might be too much. But then that space in between is where there's going to be lots of kind of disagreement or, or conversation around who got it right and who got it wrong. Um. So we can continue this work. Like I said, thank you for engaging in this conversation um, this evening. And if there's not any other comments around this particular topic. Um, I would say, Dr. Watts, I am done um, with the policy updates for the evening. This concludes them. Um. But um, I would say that we are um, at a space where we have um, concluded.
Yes.
Our, our policy work for the year. It's unlikely that even if we were able to fit in another work session, that there'd be enough subsequent board meeting space. To carry it through the full process because um. We're, we're getting ready to start our first regular board meeting for the month of May, which leaves us with three regular board meetings remaining. Um, so time has flown.
Well, I want to thank you certainly on behalf of our board and, and our team. Santello, uh, Dr. Harmon, the, the work that you've put in certainly has translated to thoughtful. Uh, discussion and uh, quite frankly, we are closer than we've ever been. So we do have some. Uh, reflection as well as some recommendations going forward and we'll. Uh, see where this lands. I'd certainly impress upon the board to allow this to sink in, to reflect if there are questions, please don't hesitate to. To reach out as, as they come to you. Uh, as a learning organization, this is the purpose for this work as it impacts not only. The dollars and cents that drives our work. Most importantly, we must remember that this work supports our core business. Uh, providing direct instruction to our students or certainly supporting those. Who provide direct instruction to our students. So thank you. With that, uh, are there any final thoughts or words, commentary from our, our board at this time?
Thank you, Dr. Harmon, as usual. Very thorough, very informative. And everyone else, we appreciate everyone being here and sharing and answering questions. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
I have a random question, if you can help me, Dr. Harmon. Um, like, we were talking in our meeting with Dr. Watts the other day. If we want to bring stuff forward that we want to discuss about policy, is there a process? Do we go through Dr. Watts? Like, what's the proper policy? Because there was stuff that came up in our meeting yesterday or the other day. And we're like, oh, like somehow, if we want to bring things forward, what does that look like?
And I apologize, Director Benno. Um, when you um, joined as a board member, I should have communicated kind of the, the protocol for how we do this. So typically, um, at the beginning of the school year, um, uh, the, the school board directors and I, we have a work session around policy. Usually our first one is about kind of the order in which we'll take these and we identify, you know, how are we going to prioritize them? For WASDA, for some that are outdated, are there particular interest in topics of the board, either based on situations that popped up the prior year? Um, and not that others can't come about. Um, so as always, um, your um, through line to us as staff is through Dr. Watts. And so if there is something that you'd like to see move forward, um, then please utilize that. But we, since we're kind of closing this year, unless it's an emergency and something pops up for WASDA. But definitely for next year's calendar agenda, we're going to have a conversation to start us off about where we'd like to begin. And what those priorities are of the board of what policies we'll pick up.
Perfect. I appreciate that. And I know Dr. Watts will bring it to you because he heard us uh, the other day. So I just wanted to clarify, and again, I never know, you don't know what you don't know until you need to know it. So. And I feel good about everything. So thank you for everything you've done today and through, um, throughout the year. Appreciate the work on this. I love policy, so this is so great to just kind of hear about all this. So it makes me happy.
Well, it's, there's plenty to do. So keep that spirit. So with that being said, I guess we are adjourned in our work session. Thank you guys so much and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Have a good night.